It is just after 6:00 PM on January 10, 2023. And this is the City of Iowa City formal meeting. And I'm going to ask for roll call, please. Should have did that first.
Alter?
Here.
Bergus?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Harmson?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
All right, well, welcome to everyone that is in the audience and also those that are on social media. And we want to actually welcome our newest counselor, Andrew Dunn, who was just appointed earlier today. And we'll just give a round of applause of welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to go on with our agenda, which item number two is proclamations. And the proclamation two A is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. believes that each individual possesses the power of self fulfillment regardless of their circumstance, and that is the duty of all human beings to strengthen communities, alleviate poverty, and harvest the potential of all of us. And whereas Dr. King's dream of transforming the world into one free from discrimination and intolerance continues in the mind of millions and has not been forgotten since his devastating death on April 4, 1968. And whereas Dr. King Jr. dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, and opportunity through nonviolent means. And whereas the teachings of Dr. King can continue to guide and inspire us and address and challenges in our communities. And whereas there are numerous ways to show service and respect to others, such as volunteering at your local hospital, donating books and games to families in need, organizing a food drive in your school, volunteering at a senior center, and many others. And whereas the City of Iowa City joins with other towns and cities across the country in tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., now and therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 16, 2023, to be Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Iowa City and urge all to join me in the celebration thereof and to take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's message of the principles of justice and equality for all. And to receive this is our Human Rights Commissioner, Roger Lucella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Iowa City Council, for this proclamation. I'm here today representing a group of people that serve on the Human Rights Commission and to accept this on behalf of all the work they do as well to better our community. My favorite quote by Dr. King is, "The way to get started is to quit talking and begin doing." The teaching of Dr. King's continue to guide us and inspire us in addressing problems that we see in our community today. The question usually is, what can I do to keep Dr. King's dream alive? So I have 10 simple things we can do to keep Dr. King's dream alive. Befriend someone different than you, someone who does not look like you, talk like you, live like you. It doesn't have to be that complicated. Number two, pay attention to social issue in our community today. Find the one that makes you pause and do something about it. Do not ignore community issue that make you uncomfortable. Face it. Number three, serve others. That's all we are here to do. Number four, lead by example. Number five is have faith in humanity. That's what a lot of our nonparfait are represented here today do on a daily basis. Number six, diversify your reading list. Diversify your movie list. Diversify the places you eat, the places you shop. Read a book by a black author. Watch a movie by a black director or black cast members. Visit a black owned establishment. We have plenty in Iowa City here. Number seven, be an ally. Don't just say you are, actually be one. Number eight, support organization that advance equal rights. We have many in Iowa City. Find the one that feeds your soul. Number nine, practice inclusiveness in your everyday life and the places you walk or play. And number 10, volunteer and give back. Those are the way we can advance and keep Dr. King's life, our dreams alive. And for Martin Luther King's Day on Monday, we have a great event taking place. We invite all of you guys. We're going to have a unity march starting East Daya Plaza at 9:45. We're going to walk all the way to Mercer Park where there are going to be all kinds of activity and speakers for my community leaders and the leaders in our black community. So we invite you all to join us and there will be food supervised, porters cooking, walking tacos. So you are all invited. Thank you very much, Council.
So could I get a motion to approve our consent agenda, items three through eight?
So moved. Taylor?
Second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Bergus. All right. Would anyone from the public like to discuss a topic that is on our consent agenda? Whether on person or online? All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Could I get a motion to accept correspondence for item eight A?
So moved. Dunn?
Second. Bergus?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, community comment time. This is an opportunity, which is item number nine. This is an opportunity for individuals within our community to come up to speak about any item that is not on our agenda. You'll be provided up to three minutes. There is a sign in sheet that we ask people to sign in. And when you address your comments, please state your name and the city you're from. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Brandon Ross. Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome, Mr. Dunn. I supported you in your previous run, and if I had another rhyme, I would use it. I would like to reiterate points that I think are important for this coming year. One would be increase affordable housing. I think that we don't have enough. We have something called a housing market. Nobody knows what it is. Landlords can just raise rent to whatever they want, and the city has usually very little to say about that, but I'd like that to change. I would like the homeless shelter to be expanded, the program for the homeless shelter. I think we can do better. We have too many homeless people. Our economy is not great. Homelessness is growing, so that's a good thing to do. I would say that transportation could be increased, Sunday transportation. I mean, people who don't have cars, and that's a lot of people, they can't get around. So if they have jobs and things like that, they can't get to them on Sunday, and that's an economic problem. They should have the right to be able to do that. And to encourage further transportation use, kiosks are very helpful and benches. If we can fit it into our budget to make bus stops a little bit more livable, people are oftentimes out in the cold or they're very hot, they're taking a bus. You know, those who are healthy in the middle years are usually good, but the elderly, the handicap, those people need to have access. And then handicap accessibility could always be improved. The man who came before me and spoke has said some beautiful things, and I couldn't possibly even approach what he was getting into when it comes to Dr. Martin Luther King, who I'm honored to say went to the same university as I did. Boston University was one of his places. I would say that Martin Luther King, when I like to think about him, I think about some of his last speeches and his speeches against the Vietnam War. He was against that. He believed that basically wars in general did not help the people. They helped the oligarchs, those who had the money, and people made money. Like today, our military arms industrial complex makes money like Raytheon and Boeing, and they just make hand over hand, no matter who we go out to. And Dr. King was very pointed about this. He was not soft spoken in this area, and I respect him with all my heart in this area. And with this in mind, I would like to please encourage people to write, your congresspeople and the president, to call and demand negotiations for a war that is very dangerous that's going out in Ukraine. Basically, what you have is a nine-year civil war, eastern Ukraines versus western, and now it's the U.S. versus Russia. Please do contact. Also, about reading new books, I got one. How the West Brought War to Ukraine.
Thank you.
Please read this. It's 90 pages. I'm taking a few extra seconds. I'll let them back sometime later. Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to address council?
Hi, Council.
Welcome.
So just a couple announcements. The university will be starting its spring semester next Tuesday, and also the student government this semester will be going to the Iowa Capitol to meet with representatives and help pass the renters checklist. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can just state your name for the record in the city you're from.
Keaton Zaimet, Iowa City.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Pam Micho. Live in College Green Historic District for 32 years. And I've been thrilled to note three houses have changed ownership out of the 16 in the last few years. There's young blood and families with actual children. And the third, but not least, is the Catholic Worker House that moved next door at 113 South Johnson, across the alley from my house. Very welcome because they provide needed housing for recent immigrants from any source, but generally they seem to be devoted to Central American refugees. So unfortunately, there's no one in the house that is bilingual. So I can't be a good neighbor and take stuff over there. And they don't have COVID shots. But anyway, what has changed in the last year from rental housing is that the directors of the Catholic Worker House have expanded their mission to a third of eastern Iowa. So as of the last three plus weeks, over Christmas, over blizzards, people have driven a two-hour commute or two-hour distance from Wapalo, Henry, Luiza, all kinds of counties far away to have English assistance to apply online or in paper for COVID relief checks. Some of these people have been very hard workers at Tyson and those kinds of food companies. They deserve the checks, but when they come from a long drive during a blizzard, you know, when the chill factor is 30 below, they need a parking space and they don't have it. So they're looking desperately for, where do I park? This is supposed to be a public facility. It's not. It's an office converted, a house converted into an office now. So as of my count, there were at least 50 applicants per day for the last 15 days. All except Christmas. They've been running all except Christmas. So the director that helped purchase the house and got donations, that's fine, but they need to respect the neighbors that have been there for a minimum of 32 years, up to 57 years. And so just having historic district doesn't mean you're special, but it is a residential neighborhood, some rentals, but not offices. And I would urge planning and zoning to have a little bit of accountability here as far as enforcing zoning issues because we all have rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address any item that's not on our agenda? Anyone online? All right, seeing no one, we're going to move on to item number 10, which is planning and zoning matters. And I will go with 10A, zoning code amendment, solar and climate action ordinance. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code to enhance land use regulations related to solar energy systems and further climate action goals. I'm going to open the public hearing. All right, and we're going to welcome Danielle Stitzman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Stitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. This is a zoning code amendment before you tonight. As a little bit of background, just to walk you through how we got to this point with this amendment, just a refresher, which I'm sure you don't all need, but the city has an investment through its comprehensive plan and multiple other plans over the years in climate action, adaptation and addressing energy and energy use. The most recent study was a solar feasibility study that Johnson County Clean Energy District presented to staff, encouraging the city to take yet again another look at our solar ordinances to make sure that we're doing everything we can and nothing that's making implementation of photovoltaic solar energy systems difficult here in Iowa City. So what you have before you tonight are the proposed code changes based on a re-review of our current ordinances, basically trying to make sure that what we are encouraging is clear in our code language and not a barrier to installation of photovoltaic solar, both in residential situations and commercial. As I said, this is not something new. The city does allow solar, has for quite some time, has taken a look at our solar ordinances over the years. This is yet just another chance to take a fresh look at it through the eyes of others. Our current regulations basically regulate those systems as mechanical systems. It's not the clearest way to state something. If you're going to go look in a code book for help, if you're a homeowner, you're probably not going to type in mechanical systems. I want a mechanical system on my roof. So we're trying to be more transparent, use wording that was more common, and really make it clear that we were encouraging solar in every way that we could. You may recall in 2019, we had another code update addressing utility scales, ground mounted solar, not rooftop, but things that were operating more as a utility, very large in scale and generating electricity in that way. We do also have a streamlined process already in place in our historic and conservation zones, basically allowing for a staff review instead of a historic preservation commission review in those instances. And if you go back a little bit further in time, we streamlined our building permit process to standardize that with the way other jurisdictions are reviewing and permitting solar systems. So as I said, these amendments are really pretty minimal, just trying to add and clarify definitions, limit any regulatory barriers to solar energy that we have, and provide in addition to those two things, some additional incentives to encourage solar where we can. As far as the definitional changes that I mentioned, they are fairly minor. They're just adding actually the wording solar energy systems in a lot of ways to make the code more searchable, explaining that's what we meant all along by mechanical structures. That hasn't, we think, been a real detriment to people who have made applications. It may just not have been as inviting as it could be for folks who were considering this and just couldn't find themselves in the code. As far as removing potential regulatory barriers, these are things that we were not blocking solar in the past, but it wasn't perhaps as clear as it could be that solar systems didn't need to comply with maximum heights, that they were considered integrated into the building by simply being on the roof. Removing some of the wording about screening requirements, obviously you don't want to screen the sun away from a solar array when you're wanting to encourage that. Removing the concealed from public view requirement for roof mounted solar. If you can recall far enough back, solar was kind of a new and different thing when it first was being implemented decades ago. Anymore, it's more of a normal and customary thing. And so a lot of the code language was maybe put in place in the very early days of addressing solar and no longer needs to really be there. It's not something that is a negative externality for neighborhoods to have and what, as I said, the city is really looking to encourage. We did also add some minor modification language that allows additional flexibility for review of truly unique and odd circumstances if they should come up. The minor modification process is a process that already exists in our code for changing some zoning standards in just a little bit of a way, depending on what they are. We do that with setbacks and heights and some other things. This is just adding solar to the ability to request a minor modification from staff if they have a particularly unique circumstance that needs another look at it. Also, it includes the prevention from private covenants, deed restrictions from restricting solar in neighborhoods. Oftentimes, a homeowner will find out the city is perfectly okay with their solar array, but their homeowners association has language that would block that. This wouldn't be retroactive, but would work on any new covenants going forward. As I mentioned, we also wanted to include voluntary regulatory incentives to encourage solar for folks who are maybe not thinking about it, or when they are thinking about it, it doesn't pencil out dollars wise. We wrote in some incentives allowing additional density and reducing parking, knowing that both of those things either help the bottom line or remove a cost. Parking is a cost, and so if we can offset some costs, those costs can be invested into solar instead. The packet does include some examples of how that would work out. There's a series of bonuses that can be acquired depending on the system. So we think this addresses gaps in the city's code, makes it clearer. There are some potential trade offs for the fee and lose system, but we really took a look at things that were marginal and we thought would be a good trade off. So overall, this is an amendment. If we've considered it to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the city's climate action goals to reduce carbon emissions. This is simply a zoning code amendment. It's coming to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. Once adopted, we would simply apply this to existing permitting processes. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, best practices, and consultation with the city's sustainability staff and the Johnson County group, staff does recommend the proposed code amendment to enhance the land use regulation related to solar energy systems and to further implement the city's goals related to climate action. At their December 7th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and voted 6-0. Happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question. Danielle, I had heard, sorry, over here, I had heard once that you couldn't install solar panels on the side of a residential roof facing the street because they were visible. So does the language that says solar panels are exempt from this, would that take care of it?
Right, that would.
Okay, thank you.
Danielle, I had one concern I have, and hopefully it's can be quickly answered, is on the providing the regulatory incentives. Will they in any way, I'm not quite sure how to put it, but you know, we have, I think we want to try to incentivize affordable housing, you know, with say like eliminating, potentially anyway, eliminating parking minimums when we're looking at affordable housing units. If we provide such waivers for, you know, solar, is there any conflict with that? I mean, you only have certain number of parking spaces one can waive if they're waived for solar. That seems like it might conflict, or at least potentially conflict, with waiving them for affordable housing.
So there's only so many levers we can pull, and we've pulled that lever for affordable housing. I guess it's the same lever, we would be pulling it for a developer that might not choose to do affordable housing, but might choose solar. So we're never going to get everything with one thing, but we want to make it as another option. So yeah, eventually parking will be something that is no longer as an effective lever to pull, but I think every development could be slightly different in what they're trying to accomplish. And so a commercial, not residential, but a commercial business might choose the parking reduction for solar, and they wouldn't have that option for affordable housing. So it's just another option.
There are no other questions. Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If anyone is online, now is the time as well to raise your hand online. All right, before I close this public hearing, council, are you inclined to vote with PNC? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved. Bergus?
Second. Alter?
Council discussion.
I greatly appreciate the cleanup for searchability. I think that's, glad we're being aware of that kind of thing.
Yes.
And updating to make it to reflect better that norms have changed as well, so.
I encourage, I'm pleased that it's encouraging an incentive for the affordable housing aspect of it, too, that that's an option. And solar, we've been trying to encourage developers to be in line with our climate control plan, and I think this will help that.
Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11 is convey sanitary sewer easement. Resolution approving the conveyance of a private sanitary sewer easement to Metro Pavers, Inc., adjacent to Lot 1, Metro Pavers First Edition. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Jason Havel.
Good evening. Jason Havel, city engineer, here to give you a little bit of background for this item. So for those of you that are maybe not familiar, this site is located on South Gate Avenue, the west end of South Gate Avenue between Gilbert Street and the river. Metro Pavers has gone through the subdivision process. They're looking at a proposed building on the site. With that, there would be a sanitary sewer service as well as a water service that would be needed for that, which is typical. And often what happens is those are extended from the building into the right of way where they tie into the city's main. In the drawing here, you can see that's exactly what's happening with their water service. So they're going from the building to the existing water main that's located within the South Gate Avenue right of way. What makes this site a little bit unique is that you can see the right of way, which is that dash line that sort of encompasses South Gate Avenue, ends just west of their driveway. And the green line, and the green dot is our sanitary sewer and sanitary sewer manhole, and that extends just west of the right of way onto private property, but in this case is a city lot. And so in order for them to tie into that manhole, which is where we would like them to tie into, and it's typical, they would need an easement from the city to install that on city property. And so that's what is in front of you is an easement to allow them to tie their private sanitary service into our sanitary sewer main. As we look at this area, this is an area where we anticipate that in the future, the right of way would be extended likely for cul-de-sac or other turnaround in this area. This property also already has existing easements on it, so it really shouldn't be any issue to add to that. But because of that, you know, and I guess the other thing I would point out is, once this does become right of way, that easement would go away because we don't have easements in right of way. It would be an allowed use at that point. So because of that, it is proposed not to have any fee charge for this easement, basically just to grant them the easement to allow them to install this sanitary sewer service. So that's what I got. If you have any questions, happy to answer those.
This is a really basic question because I recognize it on the inset, but where specifically is, what buildings are those? Not the proposed, but the actual, where the proposed, is that the 3M? No.
So are you asking kind of where that location is at?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just like, I'm completely discombobulated.
This lot actually goes, there's kind of that, I call it a small lake area there just east of the river. The lot actually extends all the way up to Highway 6 behind Hills Bank and that kind of thing.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you. It just...
Sure, sure, yeah.
I was not acclimating myself. Thank you.
There are nothing else. Thank you. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you. Seeing no one, I'm going to, before I close the public hearing, is council inclined to vote with on this? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Bergus?
Second. Dunn?
All right, and council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is discrimination against Section 8 tenants. Ordinance amending Title II Entitled Human Rights, Chapter 1, entitled General Provisions to Eliminate the Prohibition on Landlords to Discriminate and Against Housing Choice Voucherholders. And this is second consideration. Could I get a motion for a second consideration, please? Can I get a motion for a second consideration?
So moved.
Moved by Burgess.
Second by Alter.
Seconded by Alter. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think this is, from a purely logical standpoint, I think city staff and city attorney's office has done a wonderful job of identifying things that legally, because of the action in Des Moines, that we cannot, we cannot enforce this that's on our books. And, you know, it's very clear from our earlier discussions that everybody on this council is in support of having the ordinance being enforceable, although we don't have that power. Because the world isn't always a purely logical place, I find myself, the more I've thought about this and just understanding, we're now at an inflection point where we might see some landlords decide to yank housing for people. We're at that point in time where they're starting to be able to. I just don't feel comfortable supporting this at this time, although I realize it's just a symbolic act. I wish it was more than that, but I think maybe that symbolism does have some value for the people who might be in the coming, hopefully not, hopefully this will be a moot point, and we'll find out that it's a moot point, but, but if somebody, a family, is seeing that, I just hate having, even though it's symbolic and logically makes sense and it doesn't actually have an impact, it just feels wrong to me. So I will not be supporting this particular one this time around, and that's my reasoning why.
I will say that this certainly isn't something that I feel happy to, that's before us, and as you mentioned, the state has kind of made it mandatory, where cities don't, landlords have the right to not accept housing vouchers. And while none of this council supports, you know, this action, I also believe that, you know, we have to uphold the law. You know, on some levels, I think there's other ways to try to help individuals within our community, although, you know, it, it becomes a challenge when you're talking about landlord, their desires, and what the heart of this community needs, which is more affordable housing. So because this is the law, and I recognize that really there is nothing that we can do against this, I will vote in favor of it, but I, I wish this wasn't before us.
Amen to that.
I raised a similar objection during the first hearing with a question as to, you know, would this potentially have any, hold any difficulties for us? And city attorney and city manager themselves reluctantly but clearly explained why this could become problematic. And so, Sean, I applaud you, and I agree with you. I think that for us to have the clearest path in terms of what the city's position is in accordance with the state, as it's mandated, I'm not okay, but okay with supporting it, simply for the, for the, the running of the city in the way in which it needs to.
As a point of clarification, the, the thing is, the state mandate is, we can't enforce it, but there's no law that says we have to change our code at any particular point in time, is there? Or am I misunderstanding that?
No, you're right. I mean, the state law indicates that any such ordinance would be unenforceable as it relates to the housing choice voucher subsidies. And, and so that's why we were surgical in removing just that and leaving in all the other anti-discrimination provisions in the ordinance and so forth. My, my concern, as I articulated at the last meeting when this was discussed, perhaps for the benefit of Councilmember Dunn, was that, you know, years from now, it might be the case that we've lost some institutional memory or knowledge that, that this provision currently on the books, if it were to remain on the books, is unenforceable, and we would thus give some answers to members of the public indicating that it is enforceable, and that could create some problems for us and potential liability for us. And so that's one of the reasons why I think it would be best legally to clean it from our, from our books.
And I think that makes real sense. I think one of my concerns and my fears is, and I think the idea that this could cause confusion down the road is, I think you're, you're almost certainly correct in that analysis. My confusion is right now because we're at that inflection point, that if we repeal this as a council, it will cause confusion in the other direction. And if, God forbid, there are landlords that are willing to kick poor people out on the street, I do not expect them to be the kind of people to, in good faith, explain, well, who allowed this to happen? And they'd be more than happy to throw us to the wolves, so to speak. You know, say that this is something we did, and there'll be stories about the fact that the council passed this, which there should be. And I'm sure the stories will explain the nuance of this decision, which you're all completely correct on. I'm thinking this is just not the right time. I would be absolutely happy to, you know, think about this more between now and the third reading, and maybe even think about pushing this off a little ways until we see exactly what happens here in our community, now that this is like, the new law just took effect nine days ago, 10 days ago. I just think it's, it's real close, and, and by, while being proactive on this is like, normally I would be 100%, I mean, I am applauding that, like, our city staff being on top of this, I think that's, that's admirable, and this is a unique situation where we could be seeing some people in dire straits, and I do not want to confuse them thinking that we were in favor of what's going to, what could potentially happen to them. My hope is, a few months down the road, we're going to have a much clearer idea of how this change in the law is going to impact our community, and at that point in time, if there's no problem, then I'll have no problem. That's, that, so that's why I'm coming, and I think, by the way, those of you that are supporting it, I think you're doing so for all the right reasons, and, and your reasons make sense to me. I just, like I said, I just can't personally go along with this at this time.
I will say that there has been, you know, some information about this out there, both with landlords and with some renters, and the renters, it's very clear that this was a state, I mean, these are some immigrant individuals, that, very clear that this is a state thing, that this is not a city desire, but we unfortunately have to fall under that, that law. So while I do understand your fear, I don't believe that that manifests in a great deal, not to say that some people won't misunderstand it, and those that are advocating and helping individuals with any of this type stuff, they're very, I mean, they're very clear on saying this is a state thing and, and realizing that it's the law. So that's why I feel comfortable, you know, folding for it, and, yeah. So I just wanted to at least make a statement there. Any other comments?
I'd just like to express that I, I think I'm falling in the, the same place as Council Harmsen. From, from the, you know, conversation that we've had here, I think I'd be more comfortable in waiting, and I don't plan to support at, at this point.
What about just simply deferring on this? If the idea is to, to wait? I mean, is there, in other words, is there an urgency in us making a decision on this now? If, is it, Council Harmsen, you're, you're just thinking it's something you might support in, in the near future, or?
Well, I mean, I think when we see what the reality of the situation is, we just don't know. It's just, like I said, this change happened a lot 10 days ago. You know, I just feel more comfortable kind of wait and see how this shakes out a little bit before we, before we move on this. Maybe in the meantime, you know, we do have other initiatives we are doing, which is important for the public to know, to look at things like our rent, you know, looking at things with our ARPA funds and our strategic plans, to hopefully find some other ways to make, help people stay in their, their homes, even if they are on rental assistance, maybe some, you know, support for reluctant landlords, some, some assurances. So we are working as a city, and it's important, again, I say this for the public record, that we are looking at other alternatives to try and help our families as this state law, new state law takes effect. I'm just, this part of this because of the language and because I think the timing of it is just, makes me uncomfortable, and I think that, you know, we aren't, nobody on this that wants to vote yes for this is doing anything wrong because it's just cleaning up based on state law, but I think that right now it could be confusing and harmful and create, can create some confusion if we see a lot of people losing their homes at this time. I'm hopeful that that does not happen, that that does not manifest, and in six months, I'll be like, this doesn't seem to be an issue that we actually have. We now know, we're a few months in, we now have some idea, and I know I will feel more comfortable at that point, assuming that we don't have a, you know, a bunch of people discovering that they will be losing their homes simply because they're in need and need to use Section 8 vouchers. That's, that's my concern. Like I said, everything else about this, I totally get it, totally makes sense. Everybody's coming from, you know, staff and council members that support this, coming from, doing the right thing in every other respect except for this one that, that sticks in my craw.
It sounded like maybe we, there could be a motion for a deferment, and I would suggest, if there's a motion for deferment, I would put out a suggested date, September, somewhere in September, our first meeting in September would be that date.
First meeting in September?
First meeting in September of 2023. That gives kind of the six-month and actually beyond the 8-1 move.
Right, I was going to say beyond the, the midsummer lease shift that happens, which it's a whole nother issue, but, but yeah, that, the date would make complete sense to me, and I think we would have a clearer picture that I would be either firmly in, in support or firmly against it at that point, just by knowing what, kind of what the situation is here on the ground. Would you like that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we would need a motion, and then the date, if someone has a calendar.
September 5th.
September.
Did you say 5th?
September 5th. You're like Mayor Throckmorton, he always knew the dates.
Well, I'm happy to put forth a motion that we defer this.
To September 5th?
Series of hearings and decision until September 5th.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Moved by Alter, seconded by Harmsen for the discussion. I will just make it, make mention that the next item is not related, although it may seem like it is, but it is, it is two different beast, or two different items.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, we, I think I heard a motion in a second to defer to a date certain of September 5th. Did I miss the vote?
No, we had discussion after the motion.
No, that would just be a voice, a voice vote. I was afraid that you were moving on to item 13. I just wanted to make sure.
No, 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 no. No, no. So we're just having discussion.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor of deferment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to defer until September 5th, seven to zero. Could I, um, all right, we are on to item number 13. Repeal of rental permit cap. Ordinance amending Title 17 Entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5 Entitled Housing Code, to repeal the rental permit cap provision. Staff is requesting expedited action on this item.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Taylor.
Second, Thomas.
Seconded by Thomas. Anyone from the public like to discuss this item? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
I might as well just go ahead and step in it again. The reason I actually, because this has actually now been in effect for a couple of years. Unfortunately, this ability was removed from the city. A couple of years ago, it has been in place for a while. I don't think that the, it's some of my concerns with the last one about confusion and, and where this is coming from, you know, that, that period of time has elapsed, and so, so I will be supporting this one because it accomplishes all those goals, which, again, I, I agree with.
Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, done. Second, Alter.
Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 16, amending the budget, the budgeted positions in this, what did I say? Oh, 14. I flipped pages. All right, item number 14 is CPRB ordinance. Ordinance amending Title 8 Entitled Police Regulations, Chapter 8 Entitled Community Police Review Board, to clarify, a person who observes an incident on social media does not have the request, personal knowledge to file a complaint, and this is a motion to give first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person and no one online, council discussion.
I just think this makes common sense that, that we would require that, rather than having a bunch of folks who've seen it on social media and profess to, to have knowledge of it.
Agreed. Yes. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15 is ARPA Shelter House Housing Stability Pilot Program. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a state and local fiscal recovery fund, grant agreement with Shelter House to administer the housing stability pilot program. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, done. Second, Alter.
And welcome Tracy Heishu.
Oh. Trying to get the slideshow, my buttons are not working. Sign in? Okay, oh, sorry. Close it out. Yes. Thank you. You can tell I'm not a IT wizard. All right, thank you. Tracy Heishu, neighboring Development Services. Excited to be here tonight to, to talk about the Shelter House Housing Stability Pilot Project. This is a great continuation of our work that we've done with local funding streams and our CARES CDBG funds to address housing stability. This is an ARPA-funded project or proposal. It also addresses the eviction prevention under the ARPA category of emergent needs. As you can tell, the request is for 1.13 million. Chrissy Kanganelli from the Shelter House is also here to answer any of your questions. A little bit about the project itself, there's three main components. It is a three-year program. Right now, the, well, the first one is coordinated entry, and this is a critical piece for us. Their funding, right now they're funding it locally, those funds will run out. This will continue that coordinated entry piece for three more years. We rely on our housing choice vouchers, a lot of our programs are by waitlist. Our mainstream and emergency vouchers are not, thereby coordinated entries, that continuing of care process where they staff and they make the, they interview clients, they take the phone calls, and they, with a bunch of community service providers, determine the right level of housing intervention and make those referrals. This position will continue that for the three years. The second part is the housing stabilization services. So they'll hire two FTEs to continue to stabilize services. The housing navigation portion works with tenants to locate and secure housing, so anything that you need to do, arranging to-see apartments, working with the landlords. They'll start RentWise again, which is a program that helps renters have success in all aspects of the rental experience. They'll offer eight courses annually throughout the program duration. The program is not mandatory, but it is encouraged for all recipients. And both with activity number one and activity number two, these services are offered all for residents of Johnson County and Washington County. The last piece, I'm really excited to, to talk about, is the landlord risk mitigation. We've had this in our plan since 2016. This actually implements this, this fund. So you budget in your affordable housing fund 30,000 a year for risk mitigation. We've not been able to utilize this fund for this purpose until now. So what Shelter House will be doing is they will provide this, this fund. So for those clients that they're working with, and they might have different housing barriers, whether it's criminal history, poor landlord, rental history, whatever it is, it assures the landlord that they're working with that if there's excess, excessive damages, loss of rent, or legal fees beyond security deposit, that they can tap into damages, loss of rent, or legal fees beyond security deposit, that they can tap into this fund and will pay for up to $3,500. We'll review this annually, since I said it's a three-year program, and hopefully at some point we can expand this to all those with that, all those landlords who accept our housing choice vouchers. This program is limited to Iowa City households, so besin- since your affordable housing fund dollars, you'll have to be Iowa City resident to take part in that. The last component is the eviction and prevention and diversion program. So this continues all our efforts to not go down that path of eviction. They'll hire two FTEs. Those, those, those specialists will work with applicants to apply for funds, to apply for different programs. They'll work with the coordinated entry specialists to get people housed. They'll provide that landlord tenant education that is needed. They'll provide more outreach to landlords. They'll utilize the rapid rehousing funds to relocate households. This is also a continuation of their work with Iowa Legal Aid. During the pandemic, they started doing legal aid clinics at the Johnson County Courthouse to prevent evictions. So this continues that for the three years, and they'll also subtract with Iowa Legal Aid to do those expungement clinics. Those are the three aspects of the program. Like I said, all of it will will benefit Johnson and Washington County residents. Only the landlord risk mitigation funding, funding will be limited to Iowa City residents. And I just wanted to note that the city's providing these services through a one-time allocation of ARPA funds. So while this project serves Johnson County and Washington County, once our three-year funding commitment ends, to continue that level of service, we will need to approach other municipalities and other jurisdictions about continuing funding this program so that we can, that we can continue on beyond our, our pilot project. And at that point, I think Chrissy Iyer can answer any questions that you might have.
I think I have questions just related to ARPA funds. So one, I think this is a great opportunity for our greater community, but for ARPA funds, it was my understanding that ARPA funds have to be used on Iowa City residents. When we talked about the, you know, the partnership that we went in with the county, it was at least my understanding that we couldn't do ARPA funds outside of the city. So I want to.
No, I think there may be a difference, Mayor, between like a direct assistance program and really funding services. If you think about all the nonprofit grants we've done through, through ARPA, some of those services may be accessed by non-residents as well. I think this is in that, in that same spirit, little different than a direct assistance where we'd be providing direct financial assistance to someone outside of our community.
We can confirm, but it's same thing with community development block grant. When you're talking about a public service as opposed to a direct benefit, you can provide, we, we fund all of our nonprofits, knowing that they serve the county. So that federal program allows it, and we'll confirm it, but I believe what Jeff is saying is correct.
Okay.
Tracy, I had a question about the landlord risk mitigation fund. You said that the hope would be to expand it to all the housing choice voucher recipients in the future, if it could be expanded. Can you just give us a sense of the scope of the current eligibility for the first three years, like number of people that would serve compared to adding in the housing choice voucher recipients?
Housing choice vouchers without the emergency mainstream voucher, you're talking about 1,200, 1,300 households. The people that are eligible for it, let me get back to that slide. So Shelterhouse initially, when we, when we start this program, they assist any landlord that's going through a rapid, that are getting rapid rehousing dollars, mainstream emergency vouchers, permanent supportive housing, nonprofits with supportive housing. Chrissy, have any?
I'd say about 500.
Okay. So it'd be a big expansion. That was my question. Okay.
We're waiting to see. So you allocate, right now it's 30,000 because you allocated a million based on that distribution formula. So each year, when you go through that budget process, we would allocate another, let's say it stays at 1 million, every year during that three years, they get 30,000. We're hoping that we don't go through that all, that that money stays in there. So after tonight, Shelterhouse can request that funds, and they'll minister that program. We might use our inspectors, so like if there's a claim for damages, we'd go out there just to inspect to make sure that it's a valid, that the cost estimates are reasonable. So we'll commit some of our staff to doing that, but the referral's gonna come from Shelterhouse. Their properties would be eligible, so Cross Park Place and 501 would be, would be eligible. However, if those claims, the city has to verify it just for transparency.
Thank you. That was gonna be my other question, was how do we know these are sort of legitimate claims? So I appreciate that.
They have to be verified. So when, Chrissy will have that education with all the nonprofit housing providers, that when they're placing tenants between our HQS inspection, or they'd have to take photos so we can make sure that the damages are done after they got in, and then we have sent somebody out to verify those damages. So all damages have to be documented.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I'm gonna phrase this very clearly, so bear with me. It sounds to me like, based when you were talking about eligibility, that these dollars essentially are, they're, uh, let me start over. Do you have identified landlords that you're working with, or this is really based on those who have need, like the tenants, and then you're working with?
I'm gonna let Chrissy answer that one.
Landlords to, to see if you can incentivize those landlords? Or are there landlords who are a priority, saying, yep, we're in on this? I think I finally got my question out, sorry.
For risk mitigation? Yes. So for risk mitigation, the proposal is that it'd be any landlord that's collaborating with us, partnering with us, renting to these households. If there is a need in excess of the security deposit, that they would be welcome to reach out to this fund. So it's not necessarily the tenant, but it's the landlord. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, in really basic terms, are there landlords identified who would be part of this pilot project? But it sort of sounds like it's a little bit, working a little bit more fluidly than that. It's about sort of your network of landlords.
Right, so the first phase of our implementation of this is actually marketing this resource to those landlords, but it is, as Tracy said, right now, this component of the pilot is only eligible to those landlords that are in Iowa City. So any, any entity, any landlord that's renting to these households, we would be reaching out to them and telling about, telling them about this new opportunity, and that's kind of part of phasing in this first year, since it's, so there's an educational component to it.
Have you found, I mean, it seems, the, the existence of this piece seems to indicate that there is a need for it. So you, even though you already have a network of landlords who would be working with people who would be, need lower barrier entrance into housing, they still might have some hesitations.
So there's definitely a benefit to having this as a resource. As the preceding conversation about allowing to discriminate based on the source of using housing vouchers as a source of, so, you know, from time to time, landlords had a bad experience with someone that either we have recommended through rapid rehousing, or someone that has a housing voucher that we're working with, and if this is kind of that additional buffer to incentivizing them to rent to the next household, it's just really helpful for us. Any tool that we can add to this kit to continue to incentivize landlords, and also those tenants that we may be presenting, potential tenants that do have backgrounds, bad credit histories, bad rental histories, this is just something else that we can offer as a potential benefit to their taking a risk where they ordinarily would not have.
Thank you.
And that's all data that we want to be able to collect and then present also in going forward to, you know, argue for continuation of it, and in what degree. Does that make sense?
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Or the Shelterhouse? All right, seeing no one. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If in person, please step forth. If online, raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Well, I'll jump right out there. So what I'll say is, there's, I mean, I can go a lot of ways with this as far as, as a, you know, person that is responsible for shepherding over the city funds and, and how do we really meet some of our strategic plans and, and all of that stuff, but at the end of the day, I can go through the budget and kind of nitpick and that type of stuff, but at the end of the day, for me, if I truly believe that housing is a human right, and we have to get to a different level within our community, even though there is certainly funding beyond, one would argue, people would be recipients of this program beyond Iowa City residents. I think because of that belief that housing is a human right, I'm gonna support this, even though I can go through and kind of make arguments for it needing to be a little more city-focused, because 1.1, you know, million is a lot of money that we're talking about from our ARPA funds. So I'm gonna support this because I really believe housing is a human right, and we need this partnership with the Shelterhouse to get us to a different level, and this will be just one avenue that will help combat the, this complex, it's very complex, housing is complex, this complex challenge that we have, and, you know, our strategic plan talks about housing, you know, a lot, and so I'm gonna support this.
Yeah, it does, we do focus a lot on housing, and it, it does have so many facets to it, and I think it's, looks to be a very well-designed program. I like the pilot aspect of it, it sort of gives an opportunity to tweak and refine and learn from the process as it kind of unfolds. So, yeah, you know, kudos to everyone working on this, it's a really great program.
I like that it is working through incentivizing rather than it being, you know, the carrot and the stick model. I think for a very long time, in terms of looking at housing, and there's a real impulse to say, you need to do this, and so do it, without there being much what's in it for me, and this, this allows for sort of more of a partnership component, albeit, you know, yes, cash on the barrelhead, but it really is about saying, there's a benefit, you will have your units occupied, we think it's worthwhile, and I think that over time, that incentivizing model can have a lot of benefit overall about how people understand, developers, landlords, et cetera, understand the need for a range of different models for housing, particularly affordable, because certainly a more restrictive one has not proven to work all that well. So I like this very much, thank you.
I would echo the thoughts of other counselors, and also just point out, I think something that was already said, I think it functions as a good response, a positive response to, you know, actions of state government, you know, incentivizing people to potentially get rid of people who are lower income and struggle with housing affordability, so I would, I would support this as well.
I support this also, especially since it funds the full-time employees, because as we all know, the Shelterhouse has its hands full with, with its basic duties as it is now, and so to have persons particularly responsible and being paid to overshadow this program is, is helpful.
All right, roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion pass to seven to zero. Now we're on to item number 16. Amending the budgeted positions in the Support Services Division of the Police Department, Civilian Accreditation Manager. Resolution amending the budgeted positions in the Support Services Division of the Police Department and the Confidential Administrative and Executive Pay Plan by adding .5 FTE Civilian Accreditation Manager, position grade 24. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, done.
Move by Thomas, seconded by Dunn, and we're gonna welcome Chief Liston.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Dustin Liston, Chief of Police. The Iowa City Police Department's been accredited by CALEA, which is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies since 2002. We've received seven accreditation awards, we're in the middle of our eighth, and that position, the duties of keeping us accredited, is currently assigned to a full-time sergeant. He has a couple of other duties, but he's gonna be retiring in a couple of weeks. And if you remember in 2020, on the city manager's plan to restructure the police department, the, one of the plans was to civilianize that position, to create a part-time civilian accreditation manager, and this is just requesting permission for that position.
Any questions for the chief? Here are none, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic, and if you're present, please come forth. If online, seeing no one, council discussion.
I'd first like to compliment you, Chief, and I know it was previous to your assignment to that position, but the, the seven accreditation speaks a lot for, for your department and how well it's been run and how they've functioned in our city.
I foreshadowed some of this on Saturday in our discussions, but I'm not gonna support adding a half-time position in the police department. I appreciate the, the need to centralize the, the duties into a civilian position, but I still am looking for the shift and not increasing the overall budget.
Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Motion pass to six to one. Item number 17 is amending the budgeted positions in the Support Services Division of the Police Department, Lieutenant position. Resolution amending the budgeted positions in the Support Services Division of the Police Department by deleting one full-time sergeant position, grade 29, and adding one full-time lieutenant position, grade 30. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, done.
Second, Alter.
And we're gonna welcome Police Chief Liston back.
Thank you, Dustin Liston, Chief Police, again. This is in line with the last item. The sergeant that we're replacing with the part-time accreditation manager, we'd like to change that position to lieutenant position, and that person would become the professional standards position, which would essentially be an internal affairs investigator. The current process for internal affairs for the Iowa City Police Department is incoming complaints get assigned to a watch commander who is in charge of a shift of officers. He does the investig-, he or she does the investigation, and then forwards it up the chain of command. Those investigations are very time-consuming, can take upwards of 40 to 60 hours, and while that person is doing that, they're not really able to supervise their shift as well as we would prefer them to be able to. So this will clear them up to supervisor shift, as well as provide a little consistency in the process. It'll be one person that will be doing those investigations, and I think it'll really add the professionalism of the position.
Here are no questions, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand online or come forth. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I just wanna lend support to this, actually, because one of the things that I know has been talked about before I came on to council, and that was, and continues to be, an incredibly important point of contention and of tension in public and police circles, is about mentoring and getting police training that they need and support, so that they are, you know, making right decisions. And so I think that apart from the fact of having a centralized investigatory internal affairs person, which makes a lot of sense to me, that to allow the supervisors to actually oversee their shift, which as you mentioned, there's been a lot, a lot of new hires in the past couple of years, some who have experience, but more who are less experienced, that having that kind of more hands-on ability to help work with younger officers, I think is incredibly important, and is, while it is still functioning within the police department, it is trying to help shift some of the psychology and some of the approach to policing, so that people who have less experience can perhaps make better decisions. And so I'm in favor of this position to allow for the shift supervisors to do what they should be doing.
I see this as an opportunity for some of those investigations and complaints that, you know, is kind of now going to one person who isn't trying to do double, double jobs, you know, in a way, really does lend opportunity for greater conversations, greater opportunities to get to. to get to some interactions that really do change the dynamics of some of the things that this community want within our police department. And so I do support this because I, I think it is that move forward. While I know that there is a lot to be said about what the, what we would like to continue to see as far as the, more of the civilian opportunities within our police department, but I think that this is critical for just keeping those professional standards and expectations of this community in line.
Here are another, no other comments. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
No.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to one. Item number 18, Police Department Mental Health Liaison. Resolution approving and authorizing the Meredith-Sine Agreement with Community Crisis Services for Law Enforcement Liaison Support. Motion to, could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Moved by Dunn, seconded by Taylor. And we're going to welcome Police Chief one more time.
Dustin Liston, Chief of Police. This is, we already have an agreement with Community that provides us with one mental health liaison. This is another agreement that will just expand that, expand our coverage to two. It, it's in line with one of the strategic goals. And by 2028, you all identified a goal of getting 24/7 coverage with our mental health liaison. So this will double it from one person to two. So, and again, we would make sure they're working different hours. So instead of eight hours a day, five days a week of coverage, we'd have 16 hours a day, five days a week. And by, by 2028, we hope to be able to have 24/7 coverage. But this is a step along that, along that journey.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion?
I can't talk highly enough about this, and I'm very much supportive of it. I was one who talked about the need for our awareness of mental health issues, and which has led to our work session topic in February. It's just vitally, vitally important here. I hear on the news all the time, or through the grapevine, about the suicide rate in, in the community, or just mental health issues, persons out there that need help. And it's, it's time that the discussion come literally out of the closet, so to speak. It was such a, under the rug, and people just didn't talk about it. It was such a terrible thing if, if a relative or someone you knew had mental health issues. And, and it's time that we do talk about it. And our state has not been helpful for funding for it. And so I'm, I'm just really proud that our city will, will fund this, and I approve of that.
I, I fully support this as well. You know, I, I don't think it's a secret that we have some of the worst mental health, I guess, environment for care in the entire United States. And I think in line with the strategic goals, this does a, a good service to our community in, in addressing that concern.
I've been really grateful to see the work that JOA, the current Mental Health Liaison, has been able to do in responding to some of these calls with, with our officers. I do have a question about budget impact for, I think probably for Jeff or, or for the chief. This is previously budgeted funds. This is not an addition. There's no additional budget impact, correct?
Correct. And we've secured 25% funding by the state, too, as well for the position.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
A little late. Any other comments by council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. All right, we're on to items number 18, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have about five appointments, I believe. And so we will take them one by one. So the first one is going to be the Board of Appeals, item number 19A. Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027. All right. This is no, no gender balance, and there was only one applicant.
And he, I would approve of him being reappointed. He's currently on it, and he fits the qualification as being, as far as being part of the Home Builders Association, which is one of the requirements. So I'm fine with Andrew Martin being reappointed.
I agree.
I think just as, because he did have a full term before, but this is probably one of those boards where we don't have a lot of applicants. And so sometimes we do reappoint.
Well, we often reappoint to a second.
Often, for a second one, yes.
We often, well, I think, my experience is we often reappoint if someone didn't serve a full term.
That's for sure.
Yes. But, but in certain, I mean, it varies in certain commissions and, you know, where we don't, I think we try to, I'll use the term, spread the love a little bit. The service love.
Right, right.
The service love, yes. All right. Now, we will, at the end, we'll kind of do each together. If that's acceptable. All right. We're going to move on to 19B, which is Housing and Community Development Commission. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. And there is no gender balance there. And we do have some people that applied.
I would nominate Karen Patel for that.
I would support her.
I would go along with that also. I, I'm familiar with her with some other boards and commissions and, and items that she serves on. And she is always in attendance, and she follows through on, on assignments. And I, I just think she would be a good fit.
I, I echo that. Karen's an incredibly hard worker. Know her well.
Any other nominations? All right, Karen. That will be it. On to item number 19C. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy, Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2027. And we have, I think, five applicants there. No, yeah, five. And no gender balance.
I liked what Joseph Massa, I'm not sure how you pronounce his name, had to say about being an advocate for public library systems, that it's an essential resource for our community and has immense value for community. I, I just liked what he had to say. And he had a couple of preferences, but the library, he said, was his first choice. So I would recommend him.
All right, Joseph Massey will be that nominee. On to item number 19D, Senior Center Commission. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. And there is a gender requirement, and it is two males and one nun. But we have two vacancies. Oh, that's right. So we have, yep, so we'll have to determine who would do kind of an unappointment vacancy. And then we have this January 1st, 2023 through December, they're all really upon appointment, but we'll have to designate which one would get the nun, I guess. If it happens to be a female, we'll have to get the nun.
So how do you want to proceed with that?
I think we'll just take nominations. And certainly you can nominate more than one female, realizing at the end, there can only be one female. There has to be two males.
One of the people, I was just refamiliarizing myself, so apologies for the pregnant pause there. But one of the people that I actually do like is, oh my goodness, Nancy Astrogmy. She uses the Senior Center. She's been a member of Parks and Rec, Johnson Seats Commission. She has experience in ADA matters. So that's someone that I think would be good.
I think Susan Meliker also looks like they would be a good fit. Been active in the Senior Center before, good amount of leadership experience with things.
Yeah, I'd give her a little bit higher mark on that one.
I would recommend Warren Paris. He's well-known in the community, been in the community a long time, and I think he would be a good fit.
I think we need one more.
One more male.
Well, I, I had Jay Gilchrist as someone.
I did, too. Me, too.
Any other nominations? All right, we have two males, which is required, and then one nun. And we have Susan and Nancy that's been nominated. So I guess the question is, where, do we have support for, how many would support Nancy? You can probably just throw your finger up.
I nominated her, so.
And who would support Susan? All right. So Susan, help me, Meliker?
Meliker.
Meliker. All right, Susan Meliker. We'll get that. All right, I think we are ready to submit our nominations.
Where are you plugging those?
Yes, thank you. All right. So, where do we want to do the, let's see, do we know? So the, the people who left are all, they're female. So how does that work? If it's a male requirement.
I wondered that, too.
What do you, oh, I see what you're saying.
Their terms expired.
Well, and I think what she did, because there's also, under the new, two more vacancies. So I think we were taking into account, because it's a, a female and a male that have resigned on the new.
Okay.
I understood this. We, we had, the two males could be 19D. I thought, understood 19E to be, had to be the female. So Susan would be 19E.
The unexpired term, right.
That makes sense, too.
19E. All right. So we're going to go with 19E. The unexpired term would be Susan. And then Warren and Jay will be 19D. All right. So I'm going to try to give this a twirl. All right. So we've, could I get a motion to appoint the following to Board of Appeals? Andre Martin, Andrew Martin. And for, that would be 19A. And then for 19B, Housing and Community Development Commission, Karen Patel. For 19C, Library Board of Trustees, Joseph Massey, Massa. For 19D, Senior Center Commission, the two vacancies would be Warren Paris and Jay Gilchrist. And then for 19E, Senior Center Commission, upon appointment through December 31st, 2023, Susan Meliker. All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Andrew. Dunn.
Second, Burgess.
All right. Moved by Dunn, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. On to items number 20, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill an unexpired term, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2023, and one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. Applicants, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
I'll move Taylor.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 21, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill, one vacancy for a licensed plumber to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. City Council information is item number 22. So this is an opportunity, Andrew, where we just give any reports on various meetings attended, upcoming meetings, community events, and items of interest.
I'll start. I'll, I'll just like to elaborate on what was said earlier when the proclamation was read for Martin Luther King. He beautifully touched on the events. And having attended before, it's, it, I'll, I'll share your awesome and amazing word phrase, because it really is a great event. Starting, starting off at 9:30 at the Eastdale Plaza, by the, where UAW is, on the south end of it. They're, they'll start there, and the Brave Souls will walk from there to Mercer Park, which is a great, it's, it's called the Unity March and Community Celebration, Moving the Dream Forward. So that march is, is a lot of fun. And then they make it over to Mercer Park, which 10 o'clock starts off with some guest speakers, and singing, and poetry, and dancing, as well as free food, as they had mentioned, cooked by Royce Anne Purter. And if you haven't ever had her food, it's, it's amazing. And, and that's really a great event. And I, what I've heard, which is a good way to phrase it, is that the kids are off school that day, and it's, it would be a great thing for, for families to come out, bring their children, and utilize this as an educational experience around the kids, maybe just sitting at home and, and doing their iPods or whatever they do these days. Come out and have these activities and entertainment. It's, it's a great event. And then ending out the afternoon at 2 o'clock at the Bethel AME Church, which is on 411 South Governor Street, is, is a great event. If you've never heard the- If you've never heard the Bethel AME Choir, and I know the mayor can speak to this, too, and, and then also the East Union Mennonite Choir, wonderful, wonderful music, and there'll be speeches and, and a lot of great entertainment. And that's, that's a good event, too, 2 o'clock then at the Bethel AME Mennonite Church, and with, in conjunction with the Mennonite Church. So try to attend those events.
I will just add, that is absolutely a great event to attend, but there are other opportunities to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. celebration with, through the city of Iowa City, we have Human Rights Week, and you can visit mlk.uiva.edu, and you'll see a slew of events. They started actually on January 6th with UAY having an event that was really geared programming for the middle-aged to high school students to come to the public library and, and have opportunity to learn over there. And then there's opportunities for speak, sing, act, and dance. That's going to be January 13th, where performers can register at IC, Iowa City Public Library. But on our website, if you go to that link, you'll see just an array of events that is just a great opportunity for our community. I will just mention that Monday, no, Tuesday through the following, I think, Sunday, I will be in Washington, DC. So I'll be at the mayor's, the US Conference of Mayors, Tuesday through, I think, Thursday, and then Friday through Saturday at the Mayor's Innovation Project, representing the city of Iowa City. And this will be my fourth time attending. Yes, one was virtual.
Well, the mayor is going to show me the ropes with the innovation conference, because I'm going to be joining him for that latter part, so, very exciting.
If no more announcements, we're going to move on to item number 23, which is Report on Item from City Staff, and we'll start with our city manager's office.
Just a reminder that you have another budget meeting. If you didn't get enough on Saturday, we're back here at 2 o'clock tomorrow for the Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, yes, great. Our city attorney.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you, mayor.
And our city clerk. All right. Item number 24 is adjournment. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Taylor.
Second. Alter.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned, and welcome, Andrew.